Good evening. Welcome to the September 18th, 2023 Troy City Council Meeting. This evening, I'm honored to have Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga provide our invocation, so please rise for that invocation and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Please bow your heads in prayer. Lord God, Heavenly Father, Lord in front of us, Lord beside us, Lord behind us, Lord with us, Lord amongst us, be with us tonight in our decision-making. We thank you for our great city. Bless us with your wisdom, your insights, and guide us in what's in front of us, Lord, in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call to order the September 18th, 2023 Troy City Council Meeting and ask for the roll call from Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Here.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
All present this evening. We have no certificates of recognition and special presentations this evening, no carryover items, no public hearings. I don't see anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, so there's no need for reply. No postponed items, so we move on to regular business. First up is I-1, Board and Committee Appointments. Mayororal appointments are first. I'd like to move the reappointments of Timothy Blair, Marty Nolenberg, and David Stone to the Downtown Development Authority for the term expiring or terms expiring September 30th, 2027. Support. By the chair, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, that we approve the reappointments of Timothy Blair, Marty Nolenberg, and David Stone to the Downtown Development Authority for the terms expiring September 30th, 2027. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. We thank those three for their continued service on our DDA. I'd like to move the appointment of Sandra Backert as a resident member to the Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, for the term expiring June 30th, 2027.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Eric Sangal, that we approve the renomination or reappointment of Sandra Backert as a resident member to the Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, for the term expiring June 30th, 2027. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, motion carries. That concludes mayoral appointments this evening. We have no city council appointments this evening, so we move on to I-2, Board and Committee nominations. I have no nominations this evening, mayoral nominations, so I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga for city council nominations.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by moving the nomination of Amin Hashmi to the Animal Control Appeal Board for the term expiring September 30th, 2026.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that we approve the nomination of Amin Hashmi to the Animal Control Appeal Board for the term expiring September 30th, 2026. Any discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second one. I'd like to move the nomination of Annalisa Esposito Bloom to the Liquor Advisory Committee for the term expiring January 31st, 2024.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga, supported by Councilmember Eric Sangal, that we approve the nomination of Annalisa Esposito Bloom to the Liquor Advisory Committee for the term expiring January 31st, 2024. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Third one. I'd like to move the renominations of Casey Calusi and Kelly Martin to the Parks and Recreation Board for the term expiring, both for terms expiring September 30th, 2027.
Support. Moved by Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, that we approve the renominations of Casey Calusi and Kelly Martin to the Parks and Recreation Board for the terms expiring September 30th, 2027. Any discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Fourth one, final one. I'd like to move the nomination of Angela Jo to the Traffic Committee as a student representative for the term expiring July 31st, 2024.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga, supported by Councilmember Hoderick, that we approve the nomination of Angela Jo as the student representative to the Traffic Committee for the term expiring July 31st, 2024. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes city council nominations this evening to our boards and committees, so we move on to I-3. There's no closed session requested. So I-4 is next. Petition to Perform Drainage Work and Agreement Sprague Drain with Firefighters Park Budget Amendment Capital Fund Authorization to Convey a Permanent Easement, and this item will be introduced by our Public Works Director, Kirk Bovinsy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. About a year ago, we did receive $100,000 grant to do some habitat improvements to the sprague drain within Firefighters Park. This is an extension. It's probably been close to 20 years since we've done some similar improvements. So we went through that design process, and up on the screen here, I know it's, I apologize, it's very engineer-like, but it's not very conceptual, but I'll go over that in a minute. This is what our consultant, HRC, did come up with for some of those improvements. We were contacted by the EPA, and they had a grant opportunity of just over $900,000 to actually take this and do these improvements. I will say EPA is probably one of my most favorite agencies to work with because they're fast, they're quick, and they don't have a lot of strings, and most of the time, there's no match included in these grant opportunities. The EPA contact is, as I said, and said this grant is available to us. However, we would need to spend some of those funds this calendar year. As you can imagine, we went through the pavilion, dealing with Eagle, and all the permitting involved in a project like this can be very extensive. Fortunately, the sprague drain has its own drainage district and has its own rules and regulations. Because it's own drainage district, it does not have to go through Eagle for permitting. So this is the 425 agreement in this memo and in the proposed resolution. That basically, the Oakland County Water Resource Commission would own this project and hire the city back. So the sprague drain district would say they're doing this project and be hiring the city to perform the work. There is no issues with the grant. This is done a lot, but it does expedite it, and it meets the deadline of the EPA, so we can take advantage of these funding. So the design is really to help control with invasive species and for the stream bank and the stream itself quality. One thing with this particular drain is the banks are very, very steep, and when we do get heavy rainfall, the water moves very quickly. So what that does is it erodes a lot of the earth, and it reshapes the stream unintentionally. What this project will do is this project will widen the stream, and as you can see up there, portions move it. And we decided to move it because there are a lot of mature trees along the existing drain, and by moving the stream outside of those tree lines avoids any removal of those trees. So it also provides better storage capacity, so in heavy rainfalls, it will have better storage, so we're not flooding down or upstream, another great benefit. An unintended benefit would be the rerouting of the disc golf. We met with some avid disc golf players and some people that organize tournaments. They are all for this. They say that the disc golf is time to redesign it a little bit, to change up play, so they're very anxious for this project. And this project will allow to build, move some earth and redesign a portion of the disc golf, which they're very excited for. Since we are moving some of the stream, that will require the city to convey some additional easements to the counties to include it in the sprague drain. Again, we'll be doing the work. We'll be doing a lot of the maintenance because it's in Firefighters Park, but that's one of the requirements. So we're excited to get this going. I think this is a great project. It's going to, you know, I don't want to say it's going to revitalize Firefighters Park because it does well on itself, but it's going to change the look, and it's going to refresh it a little bit and definitely improve the stormwater quality.
Thanks, Kirk. Any questions from council? Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga.
Thank you, Mayor. So that was what I was going to ask you, Director Bovinsy, was in terms of these different, the changes that would be proposed, is what would people feel unless you're spending time in that area? You mentioned the disc golf, and would you not notice them? Or it sounds like you would notice them. So just wondering, if you spend time there, is it only if you're spending time around that stream, say with kids or something, or how will people see that difference in Firefighters Park?
Great question. And you know, I like to start every project with guiding principles, and one of the benefits is that I wanted to make the stream more accessible to people so they can actually go down, enjoy it, see it, and it be a little bit more native. So this is going to be with that. This project will do that. If you're familiar with Rochester Municipal Park in downtown Rochester, you know, the stream banks are very, the slopes are very shallow. You can walk down to the stream. This is going to have a very similar look and feel in this section of the sprague drain.
Good, so my son will probably be playing in it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Abraham.
Assuming this passes tonight, and I suspect it will, how quickly can shovels be in the ground, and how long do you anticipate this project taking?
So HRC, our consultant, has been working with us on this project, has started actual design. So we hope to let it in the next month and bring it back to Council for award. And we should see shovels in the ground because we have to, that's one of the EPA requirements is start spending that down this calendar year. It's anticipated to be fully complete by next spring. So when the park becomes active again in April and May, this project should be complete, other than some minor landscaping, you know, seeding and things like that.
Any other questions? Someone want to move the resolution, Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move I-4, Petition to Perform Drainage Work and Agreement Sprague Drain Within Firefighters Park Budget Amendment Capital Fund Authorization to Convey a Permanent Easement as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga, supported by Councilmember Eric Sangal, that we approve I-4, Petition to Perform Drainage Work and Agreement Sprague Drain Within Firefighters Park Budget Amendment Capital Fund Authorization to Convey a Permanent Easement as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is I-5, Report Site 11 Community Engagement Update, also with Kirk Bovinsy.
Good evening again. We did a report in July, I think on July 24th, to city council to let them know where we were headed with engagement. We did hold both those engagements, and then we came back to city council after the first engagement because there were some very passionate residents on what they wanted to see out of Site 11. We wanted to continue with that engagement since we had an engaged audience, and we started the second engagement session with notifying them that we're going to talk about baseball, but we're not going to talk about baseball here. So that was very soothing to the residents. And we engaged them first to say, okay, we understand that you don't want a sports field here in your backyard, but in general, what is your feel about public-private partnerships somewhere else in the city? And really, the consensus was there was no major objection to a public-private partnership. There was actually some excitement that this project could continue on because there is a demand for synthetic turf fields to be able to play longer. So that was good news. We next asked the question, okay, if not baseball here at this location, what would you like to see out of Site 11? And we explained the difference between what is a passive recreation and what is more active recreation, and the consensus out of that particular group was more of a passive recreation feel. We talked a lot about community gardens, additional pathways, planting more trees, making it more natural. And then there was the idea of just leaving it simply alone. Remove the building because it does need to be torn down, the old garage there, but just leave it as it is. Moving forward, specifically with the League Sports and the synthetic sports field, we started to look at alternative locations. And we looked at locations throughout the entire city, city property, and we knew Site 11 was probably the easiest one as far as location-wise, in size, and utilities available and things like that. Really, the only other public property that could support this is going back to the original proposal of League Sports, and that's Flynn Park. Flynn Park has its own obstacles because it is an old landfill, and League Sports is aware of that. So when we start disturbing the cap, there's a lot of regulations. Flynn Park hasn't been on the state's radar. We don't get a lot of regulatory issues with Flynn Park, and that was one thing that we were concerned about, is if we start digging into this, is this going to put this on the state's radar? But at the end of the day, whatever the regulations is, we should be doing it anyways because it is a landfill. That would be good stewards to do that. We're proposing to go and hire an expert, and luckily, we have very familiar with one because of SACRA. Being a board member of SACRA, there is an attorney that they hire specifically that is, believe it or not, specializes in trash. So he has a lot of expertise. So we've already engaged him, and he's interested in helping the city out with the project, just to see what we can and cannot do, or what obstacles that League Sports should be aware of if they decide to move forward, and if council decides to move forward with Flynn Park. So we're going to take a pause. We're going to do all that research and bring that back to city council, bring that to League Sports, and see if they're interested, if there's any interest to pursuing Flynn Park. And as far as Site 11, it's our recommendation that we did have a very engaged audience, but it was a very narrow audience. It was an audience that only abutted the park. That park property is big enough to host a community park, not a neighborhood park. If we did a neighborhood park, it would be the only square mile in the city of Troy that had two neighborhood parks. So when we talk about destination parks, we want to make sure we're engaging the entire community, and we're proposing to do that with Site 11 through the up-and-coming expiring Parks and Recreation Master Plan process. Not only would we concentrate on Site 11, but get a feel for the community, what we want to do with all of the undeveloped parks. So that is my report on community engagement. Sorry, Tori's not here by my side, but she was wonderful during the entire experience, and I really, really appreciated her efforts. I'm sorry, I do want to mention one thing that is included in the report. We do plan on notifying all the residents that we sent out invitations to the community engagement, the results of the community engagement, and how we're moving forward.
Thank you, Kirk. Any questions? Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga.
Just going to start with a comment. Thank you, Kirk, to you and Tori and your work, and thank you for circling back to the residents and sharing that feedback. I think that's the biggest thing I hear is, we survey, we ask, but the best thing is to close the loop. So I'm glad to hear that. The question I wanted to ask is, engaging SACRA, their experts, to find out what's possible with Flynn Park. Does that cost money? Is that just part of our arrangement with SACRA? How would that work?
Sure. It would be a separate agreement with Bob Davis and his firm. It doesn't need to come before council because it is professional services. So he has given us a proposal. He is giving us a municipal rate. He does a lot of work for other communities, so he's giving us the same municipal rate that he does for other communities, including SACRA.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kirk. Oh, sorry. No, sorry, David. You're done. Okay, Councilmember Hamilton.
No problem. Thanks, Kirk, for this. Just wanted your thoughts on, you know, there was, when this project was first proposed, and I wasn't here for that meeting, unfortunately, but, you know, we did get a lot of, you know, a lot of feedback back that a lot of people weren't happy. So how, but I like the idea of being able to propose things, bring it to people, get the feedback, and then move on. And I think we did good at that, but do, can we, I don't know if you have an answer for me now or in the future, but how can we, like, present ideas like this to the public without, you know, maybe in a smoother way, or is it just how it goes? And when you propose changes to people's backyards, it's always going to...
I wish I had Tori by my side to help this, but we talked about this. And at the second public engagement, the amount of people that came up to me and thanked us and realized that, you know, the first public engagement was, you're just doing this to check the box. You don't really care. When we came back, the second engagement, all those people came up, shook my hand, thanked, "Thank you for listening." I think it's, as we do more of these, we're going to build that trust with the community, that the engagement is not check the box for us. We truly are listening, and we truly want to do what's in the best interests of the residents, and that's why we're doing engagement. So I'm hopeful that the more we do this, the better it will be each time. And we learned a lot, too, in how to engage the community, you know. We had a lot of requests, as you know, just mailing it out wasn't good enough, or the poster boards through the community, broader search or broader notification and things like that.
Great. No, that sounds good. It's a hard thing, so of course, but thank you for that.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks, Kirk. Next up is I-6, Bid Waiver Smart Power Generator Replacement for Ladder 3 Fire Department. That'll be introduced by our Fire Chief, Pete Holinger.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I bring before you for a generator replacement on Ladder 3. The current generator on that truck is the original one, which is just over 25 years old. It's had some problems with it. We've had our fleet department and a third party try to repair it. Unfortunately, due to its age and the problems it's having, the only option at this point is replacement of it. So before you is the purchase and installation of the new generator on that truck.
Chief, any questions? Councilmember Sangal?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move I-6, Bid Waiver Smart Power Generator Replacement for Ladder 3 Fire Department as printed in the agenda.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Eric Sangal, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that we approve I-6, Bid Waiver Smart Power Generator Replacement for Ladder 3 Fire Department as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thanks, Chief. Next up is I-7, Agreement for Election Services Between Oakland County and City of Claussen and City of Troy, and this, there is a late submittal revised agreement on the table for us all. And I'll turn it over to City Clerk Dixon, who will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, before you, tonight, you have a proposed agreement between Oakland County, the City of Claussen, and the City of Troy to conduct an early voting center at the Troy Community Center for all elections. The agreement would have a window of opportunity where the City of Troy could get out of the agreement if they wanted to after the November 24 election. At any point during the agreement time, there is an opportunity for the City of Troy to exit the agreement, as long as it wasn't within 150 days before any election day. The agreement would cover the costs. The Oakland County, if part of the agreement, would cover the costs of purchase of all the equipment and supplies for the early voting center. There would be reimbursement opportunities from the state through the county for this facility rental, and then there would be a split between the City of Claussen and the City of Troy for the expenses regarding the payroll for the election workers that are working at the facility. The county would handle the hiring and the training of the workers, but the workers would be Troy inspectors. So we've provided a list to the county of inspectors that have expressed interest to us, that they would be interested in working at the early voting center. And then the county will turn around and hire those people and train them, and then they'll be working at the Troy Community Center. So we would expect that a regular Troy voter walking into the early voting center would not notice much different between if the city were running the voting center and the county were running the voting center. I'll be the supervisor with the Deputy Clerk Cheryl Stewart as the backup supervisor of the voting center the entire time. The City of Claussen, they are short-staffed in their clerk's office, so they would be unable to assist with that. So it works out fine anyway, because I was already planning on being the supervisor. So there's very low impact to the voters who wish to exercise their right to early vote. There's the financial benefit for the City of Troy to not have to purchase all that equipment. If we decided that we did not want to do that after the November election of '24, we would be able to exit the agreement, and then we would just have to purchase the equipment, the supplies that we would need to have our own early voting center, and then we could propose our own early voting plan to the county clerk and the Secretary of State. And I can answer any questions.
Thanks, Aileen. Could you actually just take a step back and remind people why we have an early voting center and what's going on with that?
So Proposal 2, from the November 22 election, contained a lot of provisions that changed election law, and one of the big ones was providing early voting to all of the voters in the state of Michigan. It's constitutional amendment, so we are constitutionally required to provide it. The opportunity within the legislation that has been written is that the county, either municipalities can go alone, municipalities can partner together, or municipalities can enter into an agreement with their county. So Oakland County has offered this opportunity to all of the municipalities in Oakland County, and most of them have accepted this offer. And early voting would be provided for nine days, which is constitutionally required, prior to every election. That would begin two Saturdays before each election day and go through the Sunday before election day. We're required to offer it eight hours. As part of this agreement, the early voting hours would be 8:30 to 4:30 every day, except for Thursday. There's only one Thursday, so except for Thursday, it would be noon to 8:00. So there'd be one later evening, and then two weekends where eight hours per day voters would, from Troy or Claussen, would have the opportunity to come to the community center and vote. The banquet area in the community center, we've already designated that that will be where the early voting will take place. There will be postcards. We're required to send postcards out to every voter, so we have a postcard that's ready to go. Should council approve this agreement, we'll send postcards out to every registered voter in the city, letting them know of the address and the times of their early voting. And then also, we have a website set up that will have more information on it that we couldn't fit on a postcard. We also have social media posts ready to go. If council should decide to not approve this agreement, we would not be able to offer, because of the timeline, we would not be able to offer early voting for November, but we would start early voting in February instead.
Okay. So that was my other question. Obviously, this is going to start next month, assuming we approve this tonight.
If council approves this, then we will be able to start early voting with this November election.
Additional questions? Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga.
Thank you, Mayor. Clerk Dixon, just wanted, wondered if you could speak to the capacity of the county to do this hiring, and are they doing the training as well of the election inspectors? Because I imagine they've had to ramp up a lot to do this.
Yeah, they will be training all of the election workers for all of the early voting centers. So they've established regional early voting centers based on population, so every early voting center will have about the same population going to it. Then, all of the inspectors that work in those early voting centers will be trained by the county. They'll have designated training times, and the clerk's office, Detroit Clerk's office, will be in attendance at the early voting training, just so that we can hear the same information that the inspectors are hearing. But the county has, they... inspectors are hearing. But the county has, they conduct trainings for all municipalities that have under 10,000 population. That's a state law. If a municipality has under 10,000 voters, they can't train their own inspectors. So the county's very accustomed to having large classes full of inspectors, and they have training materials that they provide to all the inspectors that they have to train throughout. They've also had clerks, you know, training classes when we have to learn new stuff or whatever. So they have facilities that are able to house it. They've actually obtained a floor, a second floor in their facility. They're at the county facility at 1200. So they've actually obtained a second floor, and they have all of that space available just to hold training classes and store equipment and stuff like that.
All right. Second quick question. I think, bottom line for me, would this save the City of Troy money if we enter into this agreement?
Yes. So it would cost around $100,000 for us to purchase the equipment that we would need for the early voting center. So that equipment would be purchased by the county. And then any, there's also booths that we would have to purchase. Then all of that stuff, the laptops and everything that we'd be using in the early voting center will be purchased by the county. And then the City of Troy would never, if we decided to continue with this agreement, the city would never have to purchase that equipment. It would just continuously be stored at the county, and the county would bring it and set it up. We had, I've looked into how much it would be, and that's how I know, it's like $100,000. If we decide to not go with this agreement, we would have to purchase that equipment before February in order to be ready to go for the early voting, because it's absolutely required in February, because that's the Constitution requires that we provide early voting at every statewide election. November is considered a pilot, so that we can get kind of a feel for what early voting looks like, because nobody in Michigan has ever done this before.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to confirm. So this agreement would be ongoing? It's not just for any specific election?
Correct. It would be ongoing. There's windows of opportunity after every November election where the municipality or the county can exit the agreement if they wish to. But as long as everything is running okay and we're satisfied with the agreement, it would just continue on. We would need no further action. It would automatically continue on until we decided that we didn't want to do it anymore.
Additional questions? I have two. I'm assuming City Attorney Bloom's reviewed this contract on behalf of the city?
Yes. And that is one of the things, you have, you know, a supplemental document because of the very, very short timing of this. And so Clerk Dixon, you know, got it to me as quickly as she got it, and then the county had some revisions to it. So what you're seeing is what the county has revised. But yes, it is, it is an acceptable format and protects the city.
And then could you just speak briefly to the difference between early voting and absentee voting?
So with the constitutional amendment, there's a couple things that changed with regards to both of those. So early voting, obviously, what early voting is, is that you could walk in during the early voting hours to the designated facility that your municipality is assigned to. Also, Oakland County has a regional facility at, up near, I'm not exactly sure where the address is, but it's up near the county building. So any Troy voter, Claussen voter, could walk into the community center and get a ballot at the table, similar to how you would go in person at a precinct. You get a ballot, you go to the voting booth, vote it, put it through a tabulator. The difference is that that tabulator is not going to be totaled until election night at 8:00 p.m. So that tabulator just sits there and holds your, holds all the results in it until the end of the election day on Tuesday, on the election day. For absentee voting, when you receive an absentee ballot, you can either get it in person at the clerk's office, or you can have it mailed to you. And you voted at home, or you voted in the hallway here, and then you put it in an envelope and sign it and give it back to the clerk. And then the clerk's office holds an AV counting board where those envelopes are opened. And that AV counting board can operate. We're allowed to have pre-processing now. So in a small election like November, we wouldn't have pre-processing. But in a bigger election, we might have more than one day where we would be able to process ballots in the AV counting board where it's sequestered. And then on election day, we have the AV counting board, we tabulate all those ballots, results are printed at 8:00 p.m. The difference with the constitutional amendment is that now, if you received an absentee ballot at the clerk's office or in the mail, you would be able to take that ballot over to the early voting center during the operating hours and put that ballot through the tabulator at the early voting center. Now, you would still have to go through the, if there's a line, you'd have to go through the line, fill out an application, be recorded in the laptop there. But you would be able to have your ballot tabulated by you in a machine, instead of waiting and turning it into us in an envelope and then having it opened by the AV counting board.
Obviously, a big part of this agreement and the plan is the security of those machines at the community center. Could you speak just a bit?
Yes.
Sorry.
So we have operated, since 2020, we have operated absentee counting board out of the community center in the same rooms that the early voting center will be operated in. I feel very comfortable working with Brian Goulart, Recreation Director. We have a very secure area. We coordinate off so that employees of the community center and the public are not allowed to enter the corridor. If you've been in the community center, you can imagine the corridor that has the banquet rooms in it, and there's three meeting rooms across the hall. That entire corridor is sealed off from everyone. Rec center employees, any other employees, the public. We have a huge gate that goes across the corridor. We lock the doors to the outside. So no one's getting in that area during the entire time that we have elections going on there. Now, because we have early voting, during the early voting hours, we would open the gate and open the doors, and people would be able to come in. But as soon as the early voting times are done for the night, we would close it all back up. And then likewise, when the early voting is finished on that Sunday, because the next thing we're doing in there is AV counting board, that whole room, that whole area will get sealed off, and nobody will be in there until Wednesday night or Wednesday morning, when we're all done with everything, and we can go in and clean out and take all of the, you know, the supplies and everything out of there. The ballots at the end of the night for early voting and for the AV counting board, if we do pre-processing, they get sealed into bags. The seal numbers get recorded. There's inserts that go into, like, the paper poll book, where we're talking, we're recording the seal number for the bag, how many ballots were tabulated that day. Even though we don't have totals, we can still see the counter of how many ballots went into that machine. So we could say, okay, 500 ballots went through this machine. We have 500 people recorded in the book, like, we're good. Then we close everything down. We do that every single night of early voting. So we always know how many ballots are there, how many people came through the early voting center. And then at the end of the whole, on election night, then we would do the totals for that. But we would have to still balance every day, and then balance again at the end of election day to make sure that we know exactly how many ballots we should have.
Thank you. That's why she was Michigan Clerk of the Year last year. No, no, she's doing this stuff pretty well. Good job, Aileen. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. I'm going to move I-7 agreement for election services between Oakland County and City of Claussen and City of Troy as printed in the agenda packet. I'm sorry, subject to the late submittal.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that we approve I-7 agreement for election services between Oakland County and City of Claussen and City of Troy as printed in the agenda packet and subject to the late submittal agreement. Any discussion? I'm sorry, Councilmember Hoderick.
Thank you. Just as we're having this discussion and asking questions, and we could keep asking questions, and have Aileen demonstrate the top-of-mind capability she has on this subject. Anyone watching the meeting, or if you are watching and you have a discussion with someone else, and they have questions and concerns, because we're living in an environment where people wonder and have questions and concerns about the safety and security of their voting, I would encourage you, or anyone that you run into, to stop in to our city clerk's office and ask questions. Have her walk through. She is just a wealth of information. Call. Don't just walk around wondering and feeling concerned and maybe spreading misinformation as you express concern. Probably whatever concern or assumption that you're making that is creating mistrust, if you have a conversation with our city clerk or any city clerk, it can get cleared up. And I, we have a responsibility in our voting to make sure that we understand and that we are comfortable with the process through direct information from our city clerks. So I just appreciate the discussion, and I think you can see demonstrated the amount of work and thought that goes into it. And please, feel free, she loves to talk to you about it. So does everybody in that office. So just know that you're welcome to come in and ask those questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. The one surest way to ease your mind of any potential issues with how ballots might be handled, how elections are run, are to volunteer as an election worker. I always put out this pitch. The amount of training you get is substantial, and you can see all the checks and balances. Those watching tonight heard a little bit of some of the checks and balances that are done. There are so many more. There's always a need for election workers. And so if you have any interest in learning more about the process, seeing how safe it is, how well it is run here in Troy, I encourage you to also reach out to the city clerk's office. I'm positive you'll take as many workers as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? All right. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson-Gault?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries. That concludes regular business this evening. Next up is the consent agenda. We do have a late submittal for J-7. There's a revised page 91 on the table. Anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Councilmember Abraham?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed and with the late submittal J-07. Support.
Moved by Councilmember Abraham, supported by Councilmember Hoderick, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed with the late submittal of J-07. Any discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson-Gault?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion carries. If you're here for a consent agenda item this evening, all have been approved. There are no memorandums and future council agenda items this evening. I don't see that anybody has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. So again, no need for reply. We have no council referrals this evening, so we move on to reports. Would anyone like to speak on any of the reports that are submitted this evening? Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to speak to a couple of reports. I'll start with O-2A, the JC Park pedestrian crossing. So I do have a number of questions for city management around it. The first being, I'm trying to pull up the report in front of me, but the question I wrote down is, what exactly is involved in that figure, in the estimate, in the cost of moving the, is it, in that estimate, that's to move the park entrance and to build the crosswalk, or just to move the park entrance?
I'll invite the city engineer to help me answer that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yeah, that's the total price to move the entrance, put in the crossing, the new hawk signals, the lighting that's required, the relief island in the middle. All that's required to put in the hawk signal and the safe island in the middle. So it's a total cost.
Okay. And with the crosswalk and lights, I know we need county permission, but we are the ones who do it, and we are the ones who pay for it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Other question was, it was mentioned that the crosswalk could be to the west of JC Park, between those two kind of streets mentioned. But just wondering, there wasn't a figure or kind of plan. Just wondering, I presume that would be less, because that would not require actually having to move the park entrance?
Correct. Yeah, the next location that that would fit would be actually like a mid-mile block. And we'd probably just propose a traffic signal at that point and not do the hawk signals. I mean, the hawks are gaining popularity, but for a five-lane road with that much traffic, you know, even the county was hesitant that it was a good fit.
That area would not be a good fit?
Correct, for a hawk signal.
Okay. To the west, in that other area?
On Long Lake Road.
On Long Lake Road.
In general. They weren't in favor of it, but if we wanted to push forward with it, they gave us their minimum requirements for the extra lighting and the distances between the stop signs for the side streets. And, I mean, there's not a whole lot of education out there. Drivers aren't aware of the hawk signals, so that they're not the safest, especially in a five-lane road, heavy volumes and high speeds. So it wouldn't be their recommendation. But if we wanted to proceed, that would be what we'd have to do.
And the other thing was, as I was reading the report, I was thinking, is it, and I guess that's why there isn't further information on it, is it also seemed to say that the distance from JC to John R. is not a major differential between JC and this other area. Was that correct? Is that what was trying to be said in the report?
Correct. Yeah, JC Park is 1,300 feet from a controlled intersection. And the mid-mile, where we put up a signal or the next best location, is 1,300 feet, you know. So it's a quarter mile down and a quarter mile back.
Okay. So as I thought about that, because I thought about that, I think that's what you were trying to say, in that, to me, though, to cross at a major intersection, John R. and Long Lake, four different directions happening, I would feel less secure to do that as a pedestrian or a biker than I would on the other area to the west of JC. I don't, so I wonder, I know it's not the recommendation of the county, do we have any sense of the cost of what that could be? What would it take to look into that as an option?
Well, I mean, the county, we're putting in traffic signal replacements right now, and $350,000 is our cost to replace the signals at Square Lake in Rochester right now that they're working on. The cost here would probably be a little bit more, because there's no poles out there that they're reusing. There'd be new electrical to drop in. So, you know, I would say it'd be a half a million dollars to put a new signal in at the mid-mile point.
Okay. I think as I wrestle with this, is the cost, I didn't realize what cost it was involved. I didn't realize that we'd have to change the whole entrance to the Parkway to do it as we wish. But it's still, it's such a public safety issue. We've had an accident, whether recently, we've had numerous residents write in. And so I'm trying to think, what is the, what's the right thing, you know, how do we find the right path forward? So I don't know if others have thoughts or reactions when they read that report, and if there's other options. I would be curious to know what the option, even to the west. I would feel, again, I would feel more comfortable crossing. It's not the closest to JC, but it is closer, and in my sense, more comfortable to cross there than all the way down at John R. and Long Lake.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga. Did anyone want to speak on this report specifically while it's on the table, or? I'll just, I'll answer your question. I'm still kind of pondering it, to be honest with you. Obviously, we're not in the position to be spending that amount of money right now. We don't have it budgeted. We don't have, we have other needs that are ahead of this one, even other public safety needs. So I'm trying to figure that out. I don't know if there's grant money down the line that we can look at. It does concern me that we hear so much about this, and it's unfortunate that we are kind of in a position with a five-lane road specifically right there, to try to figure something out. So I need more time to think about it personally, before I feel comfortable talking too much more about it.
Mayor, could I just ask another, I don't know if this is a question for city management or others. If it was something at some point we wanted to move forward, obviously, it can't happen tomorrow. It would have to be part of probably a six-year capital improvement plan or something. Like, how would that work? Is that something that would happen? And then, you know, then we can figure it over the long deray of our budgets, given that we do budgeting three-year cycles?
Yeah, it would definitely be something we discuss during the budgeting process coming up next April and May. In the meantime, I think city engineer and public works director have, are looking at some outside funding opportunities. So hopefully, we'd have more information by then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Abraham?
Something to consider as we're looking at this estimate is that this corner is going to be a neighborhood node. And it's intended to be walkable. It's intended to service the neighborhood and maybe have people that are coming from the park go to whatever new businesses might be coming up. And so as we think about walkability and Long Lake being an extremely busy, you know, five-lane road, what makes the most sense, particularly if- Particularly if that neighborhood node develops the way that we anticipate and what we're contemplating in the master plan. Another thing to think about, I'm extremely familiar with this area, is just probably about 1,300 feet in the other direction, east, is Larson Middle School. And it is extremely difficult to get in and out of neighborhoods during school hours. And we've gotten a number of emails about that recently. Certainly some people asking if there's some sort of traffic control that could be put in place. So we've got two very heavily used sites that we are getting emails and resident concerns about. Maybe this hawk crossing is the answer. I don't know. But whatever solution we come up with needs to address the, what we anticipate with the neighborhood node, as well as take the school proximity into account because it is a very busy road. And I definitely see a lot of people rushing to get through the walk sign, whether they're on bikes or whether they're walking. It's, it can be a little dicey some days.
Thank you, Councilmember Abraham. Anybody else on this report specifically? Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga.
Okay, final one. I did just want to go back to the OO2B, the sustainability update, and want to thank city management. I know that it was asked to have some regular updates. And I know there was a line in there about establishing an external sustainability team or broadening the original internal sustainability team may be considered in 2024. So I just wanted to put in a plug. It prompted me to find an old evaluation that we did in my workplace around cities and resiliency, sustainability. And I remember there was a line, one of the learnings in working with municipalities was, and it's a bullet point, I'll just read it really quickly, is that cities that proactively engage with stakeholder groups from the outset set the tone for stakeholders to be designers of rather than reactors to proposed policies, programs, and plans. Stakeholder outreach and education also provides an opportunity to strengthen local partnerships for energy efficiency and sustainability. So again, just want to put in a plug. I think there's a lot of evaluation and a lot of learnings that focuses on municipalities and this work that show the value of that engagement and committees and such. So just thank you for that update and look forward to what's next.
Thank you. Any additional comments on the report? All right, council comments? Any council comments this evening? Councilmember Hoderek?
I was not in town this weekend, but was monitoring the Troy Days Festival over social media and astounded at the beautiful weather we were graced with here in Troy and also by just the sheer numbers of people that seemed to be turning out. It looked like a tremendously popular event here in Troy. I'm looking out at a couple people that are, they have some dark circles under their eyes out there from our city staff. And I'm sure it was a very long weekend. We might need to prop them up out there in those seats. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I wonder if we have like some early returns, early indicators of how the weekend went. Did we feel good about it from the city perspective? Imagine there'll be a report at some point, but I'm kind of riding on a high just by what I saw. The mayor posted a number of pictures on his social media as well, even today. I'm watching the Rotary, a lot of the volunteer groups that were involved. It just looked like it was a really outstanding weekend. I don't know if there's any early comments that we have on it.
DPW Director Kurt Bovense may be able to shed some light on the situation. I approved his time card earlier today in the absence of the city manager. And no, he put in a lot of extra hours this last pay period.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Yeah, I don't want to steal too much of the Troy Community Foundation's thunder because there will be a report after everything is official and finalized. But I can share with you that at some point, we have to stop setting records. There has to be, we have to have reached the top. So attendance was up. Sunday was down, but Thursday was even. Friday was up. Saturday was up by a lot. Sunday was down a little bit comparably to last year. All of the programs that we brought back, we don't have any comparisons for the Rotary Pancake Breakfast, but the 5K run with second year, those numbers doubled this year. So it seems though that a lot of the events that we're hosting are bringing more people in. And I could say that, and you can probably see that by the pictures, the demographic of the fair is a true representation of the city of Troy. It was a very diverse demographic. There was ages, ethnicities, and that was all weekend. Touch a Truck went well, very well Thursday. That was a free event, so no one had to pay to get into that event. That was just to entice people to come in and enjoy the fair with no cost if they, if for some reason they couldn't afford to get into the fair. So I have never been asked, what is the capacity of 12 acres? But I was asked Saturday night. It was that busy. We continue to work with the ride vendor to see how we can move things around. TJ Schmitt Amusement, who's the ride vendor, they're very excited for the opportunity of including some of the pavilion area and possibly even expanding into the Stein Community Park. So really going to relook at how we lay the festival out next year with the opportunity of the pavilion and how we can incorporate that space into the fair. A lot of comments about the construction, you know, we put QR codes up there on the fence so people scanned it and saw, and there was a lot of excitement just from that crowd on the upcoming construction. I will plug one thing though. Although attendance is up, volunteerism is down. So I encourage anyone listening that wants to get involved with a great community event, that there's plenty of opportunity to volunteer through this event and make it a great event.
Did you have anything else?
No, just thank you to everyone. It really looked like the positive event that frankly, I remember it being. It's a long tradition and it's been finding its new, this new location of the Civic Center over the years that it was at Bowlin Park. It's kind of a, it feels like it's finding its rhythm here. And maybe the city is finding its rhythm as it hosts it here on our property and on this really wonderful asset that we have here, the Civic Center property. So it's just nice to see it. It felt good to watch it from afar and I appreciate, like I said, I know I'm looking at some tired people. Everybody from the fire department with the fireworks, making sure it's safe to, if you take a step back and think about it as a resident, everything that goes into that and how many people it takes to make that happen, it's a really good thing and really appreciative of the work that went into it. And I neglected to mention the Troy Community Foundation, but they've been just a tremendous leader in that regard and it's a very, we should all feel really good about that.
I'm going to pick up on that just because we're talking about it. I was there several times Thursday through yesterday, I mean, in my ceremonial role, so it was, or with my family, so it was a little bit different. I see Kurt working and getting more and more sunburn as the days go on, you know, different shades of everything, including his skin color with that sunburn. But it really was a fascinating look at what good can happen on that site. And I said it a couple of times when I spoke to public groups about how, in the entertainment tent specifically, how, you know, this was a, the residents of our community want the Civic Center property to be used for community use. And this is a great way to activate that site and bring a lot of people into our Civic Center property that don't normally come. But also it, you know, they come for recreation, often it's passive recreation, whether that's the Stein Park or this is actually something to do. And it was just really, really special to see that and to witness all of the people there. I also, volunteerism, you say, is down. I mean, I get it. I saw a lot of wonderful volunteers obviously doing good work. I also saw a lot of city employees doing a lot of work. I've been joking that I saw Dennis Trantham, our facilities director. I came Sunday morning, I drove by to go for the, to start the 5K, and I see Dennis out there on a golf cart picking up trash around the property. And I'm thinking, our facilities director's out picking up trash, we must be all hands on deck. And then I do the 5K stuff and then I'm leaving and I see him out there in another section picking up trash on the golf cart. So I mean, people really are working hard to make sure our city looks good on top of it. And Dennis, I thank you for that especially. I mean, it's kind of silly, but it showed a lot about what we're doing to make sure it goes smoothly from our end as well. And I'm tired from just going through the pictures and trying to figure out social media, so I can only imagine what you feel like, honestly. I actually saw some of you, you were there, saw you in line, saw you too, and then, and like a 45-minute french fry line. So, and he was on crutches. So I don't know, like, that was tough. But it is a great, it's a great, it was a great experience just for me to kind of watch from my perspective. And I thank you, Kurt, and of course, the foundation, I'll take an opportunity to publicly thank them next time they're here. I'm assuming they'll come at some point and give a report, so thank you. Mayor Protem Chamberlain-Krengga?
Can I tag on to that? So my mother-in-law came from Romania, so we weren't able to get there until Sunday for International Day. I had a moment, I was walking behind the tent and I see, I see this man. He's in a cart. He's got gloves. He's got these huge trash cans, trash bags and throwing them, they're heavy, into a big dumpster. And I did a double scan, like, that's Kurt Bovense. That is our director of public works. And I just went, you saw, I went over to you and I was floored, you know? You were a director, just like Dennis, you were out there too, getting your hands dirty. And to me, that is, that is, that's what we mean by being a true servant leader. And we talk about servant leadership, but that is servant leadership. And that just will stay with me and I will not forget that moment in seeing you and seeing many of the other, you know, volunteers out. But just thank you. Thank you so much. That is being such a role model to so many of us, to myself and others in the community. So thank you.
Our privilege.
Also wanted to give a shout out to Lisa Bika-Grodzky, the entire Global Troy. It's one of my favorite events. It's a chance to see all of our community come together. And my mother-in-law being here, she doesn't speak English. She came, we had a little Romania table, she brought Romania costumes for us. She was just amazed by the diversity in our city that she saw on that stage and people celebrating and coming together. And so it was, again, just another amazing moment. So thank you to Lisa, thank you to Global Troy. I didn't get to be there early enough for you, Mayor, when you spoke, but I'm sure it was great.
It's on YouTube. No, it's not. I'm sure we'll find it for you.
It's wonderful. So again, thank you to all who make Troy Days possible. I really, I really appreciate it. And then I have another little follow-up question.
Before you do that, about Lisa Bika-Grodzky, I just like this story. She talked to me right before, she said, you know, well, not that story, there's a difference. No, she, you know, she told me, one of the reasons, she, you know, she's all in on this International Day. She books all of the talent, makes sure everybody's running there on time. Of course, Global Troy helps and supports. But she told me that, you know, when she was a child, when she was young, she used to perform in the International Day at Troy Days. And so she feels like this is her way of giving back and paying it forward for all the help the adults gave her to have that opportunity back when she was young. That's why she does it today. So I learned that for the first time Sunday, yesterday, which was fascinating to me. So good people in the city is my point. So go ahead.
Absolutely. So switching gears, master plan, I did want to just ask where we're at in terms of releasing it, if it has been released. And I ask that because I'm already getting residents emailing me, asking me, where can they send their input? And I think what I'd heard is there's going to be a suite of social media, I presume, maybe even a special email where people can send information. So just kind of wondering where that's at and what do I tell residents?
You can tell them to visit troymi.gov/draftmasterplan. And you can also find the master plan page by navigating to it through the planning department. The page has a lot of information about what is a master plan in general and the history of our master plan in Troy. It has a link to the YouTube video of the city council meeting on August 21st, when city council voted to distribute the master plan. It's got an email address. You can send your comments to masterplan@troymi.gov. You can also mail them the old-fashioned way. Post office will still deliver mail to 500 West Big Beaver Road here in Troy. So that's, I think, if you're watching on TV or streaming on YouTube, that's probably the easiest way to get connected to the master plan. There is also social media posts happening. There are actual in-person information tables here in City Hall, in the library, in the community center. And yeah, I think that's three locations. You may have seen similar information tables for the library strategic planning. So we've got all that stuff going on. So hopefully folks won't have to look too far to find a way to get plugged in.
Okay. Just to repeat it, masterplan@troymi.gov? Is that correct?
Yep, masterplan@troymi.gov.
That's the email.
That's the email address.
The email, right. Because that's why I'm here and people want to know where to email. Thank you.
All right. Any other council comments? All right. I don't see anybody signed up for public comment for items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. And we have no closed session this evening, so we are adjourned.